Education meeting for January 22nd, 2018 to order. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mrs. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Dr. Davis and Obulus?
Here.
Mr. Adler?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Here.
Mr. President Ross?
Thank you. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any announcements? Mr. Wilson?
Sixty-seven middle school students representing nine schools competed Saturday in the 2018 Peoria Public School Math Counts Competition. Lindberg, Mark Beals, and Roland Akers won the top three spots in the overall competition, but there are individual and team winners in multiple categories. Math and Science Coordinator Susan Gobain will present awards at the February 22nd Board of Education meeting. Congratulations to all of the PPS mathletes.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
Life changers. Three Peoria Public School teachers have been nominated for the 2017-2018 National Life Changer of the Year Award, sponsored by the National Life Group Foundations. The nominees are Hedy Elliott Gardner, Lincoln K-8, Deborah Reddington, Peoria High School, Jetzke Medima, no, I didn't pronounce that correctly, Culinary Arts, Woodruff Career and Technical Institution. Details on the award are on the PPS website and in the remarkable time sent out on February, January 19th. Students, parents, PPS staff are encouraged to support the nominees via online comments. The link to each nominee's profile is also on the PPS website.
Thank you. Mr. Ross?
Here are some upcoming events at PPS high schools. Peoria High School and the Peoria Public Library are hosting an eight-week after-school coding and game design class every Wednesday from 3:30 to 5:00 in the school library. Richwoods High School Band and Orchestra will be held Wednesday, January 24th, 6:30 PM in the back gym. Manual Academy will host the first tech robotics challenge on Friday, February 9th, and Saturday, February 10th. The guest speaker on Friday will be Dr. Luther Beagle, NASA scientist and Sherlock Principal Investigator at NASA's Jet Propulsion Laboratory. Dr. Beagle will speak on the robotic exploration of Mars. In other news from Manual Academy, Skills USA began once-a-week meetings on Thursday in Mrs. Rice's room, and the school is investigating starting a venture scouting program to incorporate leadership training, goal-setting, and project management.
Thank you. Other announcements?
Hola, buenas noches y bienvenidos. Hello, good evening and welcome to everyone. Maestra de Ciencias, the Manual Academy, Lori Edinger, ha sido seleccionada por Next Generation Science Standards. Ha ser una escritora por el examen de ciencias nacional, National Science Test. Manual Academy's science teacher, Lori Edinger, has been selected by the Next Generation Science Standards to be a writer for the National Science Test. Edinger is one of nineteen educators selected and the only teacher from Illinois. Edinger has served as an Illinois Science Assessment Grader for the past two years. From April through October of 2017, she graded 22,000 test items from high school biology and middle school science students. Edinger will travel to Kansas City for professional development in writing science-related scenarios with a series of accompanying questions. The training will also help Edinger develop NGSS-aligned assessments for her classroom. Current National Science Standards are based on the National Science Education Standards from the National Research Council and benchmarks for science literacy from the American Association for the Advancement of Science. Current standards have been in use for fifteen years. The National Research Council created NGSS to develop standards reflecting major scientific advances, as well as greater understanding of students' cognitive development and the learning process.
Thank you. Other announcements? I don't have any. Our community contribution this evening, normally we, the Community Contribution Award recognizes members of the community who provide exemplary service to the Peoria Public School students. This week, however, we are recognizing one of our own staff members for the role in supporting the community. Mr. Welch, I'd like to ask you to come up and introduce that staff person.
Good evening, Board President Ross, Board of Education, Superintendent Karat. This evening, I'm very proud, very pleased to recognize one of Peoria Public School's finest, Chef Yeti. Chef Yeti is a third-generation hospitality and restaurant professional. A native of the Netherlands, her parents owned the Hotel Postmore, and her parents owned and operated several restaurants. She began working in the family business at a very, very young age. Following graduation with a degree in hospitality management, Chef Yeti came to the United States and, over the years, worked in the food and beverage management positions with Omni Hotels, Holiday Inn, and the Hilton. She also has experience in sales and managing of her own catering business. She also enjoys working with young people as a volunteer for 4H. These two aspects of her life combined five years ago when she was hired to form the Woodruff Career and Technical Centers Culinary Arts Program. Since then, the program has grown to over eighty students, and we've added another teacher, Chef Yoker. Chef Yeti's competitive nature kicked in when she learned that the National Restaurant Association sponsored Pro Start High School culinary competitions, which gave our students the opportunity to earn scholarships. The Woodruff Restaurant Management and Culinary Teams meet after school once a week for approximately five months. They write restaurant business plans, create menus, and a marketing campaign. Students learn about deadlines, planning, and working under extreme pressure. Since initiating the program's involvement in Pro Start, our culinary students have earned over $200,000 in scholarships. Chef Yeti was recently named the Illinois Restaurant Association 2018 Educator of Excellence. She will represent Illinois in the National Restaurant Association Pro Start Educator of Excellence Program, which recognizes educators who demonstrate passion, commitment, and creativity in helping their students make the most of opportunities offered by Pro Start. Her students also compete in the ICC Culinary Arts Chop Competition, and this year will all compete in the Skills USA this spring. Chef Yeti and her students also met her fifth-grade students in our school district in the Sedexo Annual Future Chef Competition, which will be this year, March 10th, at Lincoln Middle School. Finally, Chef Yeti and her students compete in the Annual Neighborhood House Food Fight at the Peoria Civic Center. The event, which drew an audience of over six hundred in April, gives culinary students the unique challenging experience of cooking in front of an audience and competing against fourteen of Peoria's leading chefs. Food Fight is a fundraiser event which provides students, children, and seniors a variety of services, including meals on wheels, Sunday meals, summer meals, and a food pantry. These are some of the reasons that Chef Yeti was nominated for the Life Changer of the Year that was announced earlier this evening. Chef Yeti, we appreciate all that you do, invite you to the podium for comments.
So, well, this is a very nice compliment, and I could not have done it without these amazing students that Peoria Public School sends me. I heard Dr. Karat earlier this year, we did an event right here in this building where the state superintendent attended, and Dr. Karat said, "These are my kids, these are our kids," and that's how I feel about it, too. So, I love my job, every minute of it, and I'm just so grateful for this opportunity to work with all of you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chef Yeti, for your hard work, and not only assisting our children, but also building skills in making the community a better place for, with a competitive spirit. And on behalf of the board, Dr. Karat has a small token of our appreciation.
Thank you, President Ross. Chef Yeti, we have a small, it's cute, token of appreciation. It says, "Peoria Public Schools Community Contribution Award 2017-18 School Year," and it has your name customized on it. We talk a lot about preparing our young people for the new economy, and not just pushing everyone into university, but realizing there are lots of great opportunities with skills and credentials, and so we're proud of the work that you're doing with the culinary program at Woodruff, and we're going to do a lot more of that. We have a lot of talented young people, and when we talk about college and career readiness, some go straight on to four years, and others, you're providing skills, they can become entrepreneurs, they can do quite a bit and do very, very well, and create middle-class jobs, so we just appreciate you and thank you so much for your commitment.
You're welcome.
I would like to say also, aside from that, they are great, great lunches on Thursdays. Let's open to the public. Okay, student showcase. Okay, Mary. Ms. Sherman?
Last week, three Richwoods High School students and some of my best friends, Emily Antonacci, Ginger Batten, and Bunny Zell, performed their composition, "Liberty Serenade", before a performance of Hamilton at the CIBC Theater in Chicago. Richwoods High School Choir and Social Studies students participated in the Hamilton Education Project, which provides curriculum based on the hit musical, Hamilton, to teach high school students methods of historical research. Music teacher Terry Cole and social studies teacher Thomas Hayes, who you might recognize from APSCO, used the Hamilton Education Project curriculum. As part of the project, students are required to submit an original poem, dialogue, or song based on Alexander Hamilton or another aspect of the founding area. Each school participating in the Hamilton Education Project chooses one of these to submit, with the possibility that the students will be selected to perform at a performance of Hamilton. "Liberty Serenade," an original song, was chosen by students as an entry from Richwoods. Another song by Richwoods student Claire Morical was also chosen to be included in the RHS's Choirs 2017-2018 CD. Seventy Richwoods High School students and chaperones were able to travel to Chicago to see the performance of Hamilton. Congratulations, Emily, Ginger, Bunny, and Claire, and if you'd like to come up to say something, you can do so now.
Sing something.
This was probably one of the coolest things I've ever done, being to perform with some of my best friends on a stage in front of so many people was so incredible, and yes, thank you to Mr. Cole for this opportunity and the people at Hamilton. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ginger Batten, I am a senior at Richwoods High School, and I would just like to thank all of you for recognizing us today and for allowing us to create that really nice video with Raphael. That was a super awesome thing that we'll be able to keep for years, for the rest of our life, and I would like to thank our teachers for helping us along with this process, and like Emily said, this was one of the coolest things we've gotten to do probably ever in our lives this far, and I think that's what District 150 is really about. It's creating these remarkable memories and just these creations between students, and I would really like to thank, on behalf of all the District 150 teachers, just to say thank you.
Wow, I think Ginger and Emily said all of it, but I am Mary Zell, I'm also a senior at Richwoods, and I would just like to again thank our wonderful teachers and for this amazing opportunity, that it was a dream come true to perform this song in Chicago, and so just thank you.
Hi, I'm Claire Morical, I'm a junior at Richwoods, and being able to see these guys on stage was absolutely amazing. They were so beautiful, and thank you to Mr. Cole and Mr. Hayes for giving us the opportunity to see that, it was really cool.
All right, next up, we have the Accelerated Reader Program from Peoria Public Schools. K-8 students compete in a winter break accelerated reader competition. Please welcome Mrs. Grashenich to recognize the winning readers and their school.
For the past two school years during the winter break, Peoria Public Schools has encouraged its K-8 students to read on a regular basis. To add a little bit of competition to this, our program was called, "The Snow Is Falling, Books Are Calling," and we created this for all the primary and middle schools, so we wanted to give them just a little bit of fun. So, what we did was during the first week back to school, during the dates of January 8th through the 12th, students were allowed to take accelerated reader tests on the books that they read. Students have to pass those tests with a score of eighty-five percent or higher to earn points. So, we had two competitions. The first competition was created to get as many students reading as possible, any book they wanted. To determine the winning schools, we looked at which schools had the highest percentage of their student body taking and passing AR tests during that window. I will now call up the primary schools that had the greatest percentage of student body members taking and passing the tests. When I call your school, please come to the podium and tell us your name, bring any students you have with you, and tell us how you encourage students to get reading. Each school, or winning school, by the way, will receive funds to purchase more books for their school library. With seventy-one percent of the student body taking and passing AR tests, in third place, we have Keller Primary School.
Would you like to tell us who you have here, Mr. Turner?
You want my students, too?
Sure, you can have them all stand up if they're here.
All right, Keller students, stand up proud.
Who recognized the students in the manual?
Good evening, Board of Education, Superintendent Karat, thank you for having us tonight. This is Lori Harris, our library manager at Keller. She works very hard to encourage the accelerated reader program and reading in general, and we have Donald Ford, we have Kevin Lau, we have Linda Han, David Han, and Sidi Mohammed Sarir, all the way in the back there, step up, Sidi. Come closer. They were all excellent readers, they love books, and that's what we try to encourage, the students to find something that they love and then try to get them as much of those as possible. So, Mrs. Harris has done a wonderful job of getting the Bookmobile to Keller, the kids love the Bookmobile. We try to buy books when we can with our fundraisers and so on, and we just try to get them in the library and get them access to as much as they can. We also use the Myon Reading Program, they love it, so we just try to make reading fun, and these guys love to read. It's hard to get a book out of their hands some days, so congratulations, guys.
Oh, thank you.
And at seventy-six percent of the student body taking and passing AR tests, coming in second place, Charter Oak. Mrs. Rodriguez is here.
Do they get medals, Ms. Grashenich?
Well, we have a nice plaque for the building, because this is a building process, and then we have individual student awards coming next.
How beautiful.
All right, well, Charter Oak, we are huge fans of the AR program, we do it year-round, and we do believe that it raises reading achievement. So, this was during the week of competition, it was really just an expectation, because that's what we do, we take AR tests, because we know that that's raising our achievement anyway. So, we had a great participation, the expectation was that our AR readers would be doing what they do best, and that's what they did, so we had a great percentage. So, thank you for recognizing our school, we have some awesome readers right here with me, and we'll be recognizing one, I think, in a little bit, right? Students next, all right, thank you very much. And now with seventy-eight percent of the student body taking AR tests and passing them, in first place, Witter, Whittier Primary School. Hi, I'm Corvus, the proud principal at Whittier, woo, go Wildcats, and I'm going to introduce the people that really do the work. This is Denise Fritsch, our interventionist, and Jennifer Brady, our librarian. Teachers, if you're here, will you stand up for Whittier, here supporting the students? And we have some students, and I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Fritsch. Come on up, Mrs. Fritsch.
Hello, School Board of Education, Dr. Karat, we want to thank you, first of all, for all of our parents and our families that are here. We want to thank the district for providing accelerated reader for us. At Whittier, accelerated reader has been an ongoing program for many, many years. We are very appreciative that the district now helps fund that for us, which is a great thing. We believe that AR creates student autonomy, because they're doing that individually. This is an individual, goals are set for the students, and they help the teachers set those goals for themselves, and they work towards those goals. We believe it helps with the technology, they're using technology, they're getting their AR tests taken, using the computers, the streams, any sort of technology we have in our building. We also love the fact and believe that it creates an intrinsic love for reading, that they, they're constantly, these are the kids that are constantly reading, and we also believe that AR helps them become lifelong learners. As you can see, I have several students with me. We had, I looked at, Ms. Brady and myself looked at these, the scores of the tests, and we chose the top five readers at each grade level and invited them to attend the school board meeting, and today I sat down with them and we talked about reasons why they feel they're successful, so I had a sentence starter for them, and I have a few of them that think they're ready to read in front of this big crowd, so I think they can do this, so those of you who want to try. The sentence starter was, "I am successful at reading and taking AR tests because," and we're going to have a couple of them share with you. So, let's have Rashad, are you ready first?
Yes.
Speak in here so they can hear you.
Hello, my name is Rashad Reed, and I am successful at reading and taking AR tests because I know how to read, I'm awesome, I remember what I read so I can choose the correct answer, I look at all of the answers before I choose my answer, and I make sure I understand what the question is asking me.
Oh, wow. Okay, so, tell them your name, say, "I'm Christopher."
I'm Christopher. I practice reading at school and at home, my teacher helped me read, I love taking AR tests, I always score a hundred.
Christopher is a first grader at Whittier. Do you want to try? Austin? Alexis? Hannah? Tell them your name and what grade.
My name is Hannah Huff, and I am in second grade. I am successful at reading and taking AR tests because I read books carefully and more than one time so I can remember what I read. I love taking AR tests.
My name is Alexis, and I am in second grade. My mom and uncle and other family members help me read, and I take at home books from my small class, so I can read at home, then I can take AR tests to earn more points.
All right, tell them your name and what grade.
I am Ramsey, and I am, I am in kindergarten, and I like to read, I like to read fun books, and then take AR tests.
My name is Isabel Lynn, and I am successful at reading and taking AR tests because I have the ability to read, I have a good memory, I look over the answers before I read the question, sometimes I read the book twice to understand the questions better.
Hi, my name is Leighton, and I'm in first grade. I am a good reader, Miss Allen lets me take AR tests and teaches me how to read.
All right, so as you can see, we have a lot of successful readers, we love reading at Whittier, and thank you for this opportunity. Go Wildcats.
All right, next up, I'm going to have the middle school come up, as I call them. With sixty-three percent of the student body taking and passing AR tests, in third place, we have Harrison.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Mrs. Daniels, I'm the principal at Harrison Community Learning Center, the pride of the South Side. Keep saying that. So, at Harrison, we take pride in reading, not just for "The Snow Is Falling, Books Are Calling," but we have a goal to make sure that we read, because we know readers are out of sight, and we have a competition that goes on, that our students read and earn points to make sure they reach every planet in the solar system. So, we are reading every day, and we know that our students are readers because they are leaders.
With seventy-four percent of the student body taking and passing AR tests, for second place, Roosevelt. Mr. Morrison?
Jamir, come on up, David Owens, D'Angelo. One thing, as one of the building leaders, I have to really congratulate and put kudos to being surrounded by good team members with our librarian, teachers like Ms. Meninga, these are actually all her students, by the way, and our interventionists, you know, really working together, having teachers set goals, setting up some competition between classes, celebrating students, putting their photos on our wall of fame, and, you know, little things, a piece of party to really push and strive for that reading. One of the really good things that I've seen this year, my second year, Roosevelt, is really loving, myself loving it, the students loving that Myon learning, and really syncing with the AR test for them to do that, because they're really hitting the Myon hard, after school, during school, during workshop, and, you know, it really sets them up for that AR test, so thank you for that, and greatly appreciate that, and Ms. Meninga, thank you for coming and representing as well. Oh, Ms. Knox, I forgot you, sweetheart, I didn't see you, Dzavia Knox is also our first grade student, sorry, sweetheart, so, thank you very much.
Does the librarian like to make some comments? Does the librarian like to make some comments? Yes? Susan?
Do you want to make comments? Do you want your librarian to make some comments? Oh, second grade, I'm sorry, Ms. Meninga, yeah, sorry, sorry. I was listening. I was listening.
I'm very proud of my students. I'm a facilitator. They are the winners. You know, they really are competitive, and they enjoy reading.
And you said they use the streams a lot in the rooms.
That was the technology, the streams have been incredible.
That's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to draw.
Ms. Hagaman.
Out of control.
All day. They are incredible. I'm very exhausted.
Great. All right, with 76% of the, yeah, give them a round of applause. And now with 76% of the student body passing AR tests, for first place, Von Steuben. Mr. Ryan's here.
Good evening, everybody. I am Tom Ryan, principal at Von Steuben Middle School, and I have with me Ms. Teresa Meadows, who is our fifth grade ELA teacher. When the scores first trickled out, a little bit of a competitive edge came out in me, and I would run from one end of the building, letting everybody know where we stood, and that everybody else would be seeing the scores, and they would hit the accelerator a little bit, too. And they said, "We got you, Mr. Ryan, we got you." And then I'd run to the other end, same thing, "We got you, we got you." I'm big on shared leadership. I think that creates a lot of buy-in in the building, and a lot of people that are willing to step up and show some ownership of what they're doing in the building as well. So, I was going to sit down and write something really, really extravagant, but Ms. Donahue said, "You might want to take this instead." So, there's part of that shared leadership coming up. And after the staff kind of talked a little bit, Ms. Donahue wrote this, and it starts with "we," which is a word we use a lot. "We took time during the contest week to really encourage the kids to build a love for reading, and to see that sometimes it is just nice to read for fun. As adults, we pick up magazine articles, read stories online, or read other items just for the fun of reading. We want to instill that in our students as well. Reading doesn't always have to be a textbook or a 300-page classic novel. The contest sparked an interest in some of our students who hadn't read a library book all year. Many students started the school year two or three grade levels behind in reading, so we are willing to try all sorts of strategies to get them to enjoy reading and to close the gap. The Myon program has really encouraged reading at Von Steuben through a wide variety of genres and styles. Teens today would rather be on their phones or on tablets, so Myon fits perfectly into their lifestyles. Many of the Myon books are on accelerated reader as well, so our students were able to read the books on the tablet, then take the AR test. The Lexile levels at Von Steuben continue to grow each week as we are seeing the results of that in our NWEA reading scores. At the end of the day, we just want the students to be reading anything and everything that they can get their hands on. And I think any kind of reading is practice. When we have these contests, that's kind of fun, but I know all of the schools made a really good effort to get their students to read as well. Thank you.
Anything you want to say?
I just want to say thank you. From the bottom of our hearts, Von Steuben teachers have been working extremely hard to encourage all of their students. So, thank you from Myon. Thank you for encouraging friendly competitions and helping our students read to succeed.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So, we had another way of recognizing students as well, and then there's one more after this. The second way we set up the competition was to acknowledge the schools that tried to encourage students to select books that were most appropriate to their individual academic growth as readers. To determine this, we looked at average points earned per student at the school. I will now call up the primary schools that had the highest AR point average per student. When I call your school, please come to the podium and tell us your name, any students you have with you, and how you encourage students to read. That will provide the appropriate amount of challenge. If you've already talked and you don't want to talk again, that's okay. All right. The average, third place with an average of 2.18 points per student is Keller Primary School.
I've been standing back there thinking of all the things I could say. Thank you.
And for second place with 2.24 points per student, Roosevelt.
That's right. Represent.
Picture, newspaper?
And with an average of 2.37 points per student, first place, Whittier.
Thank you.
And now for middle school, with an average 1.93 points per student, in third place, Harrison. And with an average of 2.11 points per student, in second place, Mark Bills.
Good evening. I'm Laura Rogers, principal of Mark Bills, and behind me I have our four top readers and our library manager, Mrs. Schaefer, and she's going to speak for a moment about how she encouraged our students to read.
This is my first year with the district and as a library manager, and I've enjoyed it immensely. I first get the kids encouraged by letting them realize how fortunate we are to live in a country where we have access to books and libraries. That's the number-one thing that we need to all remember, and I make sure that they are aware that books are precious and that they are important, and we are very fortunate to have access to them. Secondly, I like to make sure that they understand that 20 minutes of reading a day improves not only their test scores, but just improves their overall life. They can learn life lessons and all kinds of things that not only make them more intelligent, but make them a better community leader and a better person in general. Oh, yes, and I, these, these four students are going to be recognized later, so I'll, I'll wait for that. These were our top readers. Thank you.
All right, and with an average of 5.24 points per student, first place, Washington. Well, on behalf of Washington, I'll accept their plaque tonight. Finally, we'd like to acknowledge the top three readers from each grade level. The students I'm about to acknowledge earn the most points during the week of January 8 through the 12th. These are the top three readers from the entire grade level district-wide, so that means the top three from about 1,000 students. So, if you're here when I call your name, please come to the podium to receive your medal. From kindergarten, third place, Glen Oak, with 2.7 points, Esteban Zavala. And second place from Keller with 3 points, Sadeh Mohammed Sarir. I hope I said that correctly. And from Charter Oak with 3.1 points, first place, Robert Randall. Yes, absolutely. We had some ill students today, so. And from first grade, 7.4 points from Harrison, third place winner, Nathalie Muniz Rodriguez. Did I say that correctly? And from Roosevelt, 7.5 points, second place, Dezavia Knox. Dzavia, Dzavia, sorry. Okay. So, can you get that to? Well, you know, maybe she had to get home to do some more reading. All right, and 10.8 points from Franklin, first place, Diare Davis. And now for second grade, our third place winner, 13 points, third place from Roosevelt, David Owens. And with 16.9 points, also from Roosevelt, second place, a future reader, Jamir Stogner. And now, 21 points, first place winner from Roosevelt, DeAngelo Williams. And third grade with 15, oh, I'm sorry, 26 points from Keller, third place, Donald Ford. With 35.2 points from Heinz, second place, Ava Barksdale. With 52.4 points from Keller, first place, Linda Han. All right, fourth grade, third place, 59.5 points from Keller, Kevin Laou. Did I say it right, Kevin? Congratulations. And with 59.9 points at Keller, second place, David Han. And with 61.7 points from Charter Oak, first place, fourth grade, Agreeni Nikra. Congratulations. And we're not done yet. Fifth grade, third place from Mark Bills with 22 points, Jaden Poole. And with 30.7 points from Von Steuben, second place, Elijah Barksdale. With 63.8 points, first place goes to Mark Bills, Sean Glover. And sixth grade, third place with 16.2 points, Rolling Acres, Amin El-Haram. And Mike, Mr. Barber, if you want to come and accept the medal for your student. And second place with 29 points from Rolling Acres, Kailia Williams. And with 32 points, also from Rolling Acres, first place, Thu Anlu. Hopefully, I said that correctly. And seventh grade, third place with 20.6 points from Lindbergh, Silver Ingersoll. Also from Lindbergh with 25 points, second place, Desiree Simpson. Mrs. Malley is accepting on her behalf. With 44.4 points, from Lincoln, first place, Marissa Stacy. And you brought your fan club, too. That's great. Congratulations. And finally, our eighth grade group. We love to see our eighth graders still pushing forward with that reading. 22.2 points from Mark Bills, third place, Tyson Ridge. Congratulations, Tyson. 26.2 points from Sterling, second place, Brittany Jackson. Congratulations, Brittany. And finally, with 27.1 points from Mark Bills, first place, Zoe Glover. We're really proud of all of our readers, and especially want to thank our staff members who encourage students to keep reading, and parents. Parents, if you want to stand up or give away, we want to thank you, too, for encouraging reading.
Chris is going to show the video of...
Thank you all. If you'd like to, if you'd like to stick around for a minute, we're going to show the video from Hamilton of the students.
Can they hear you? I don't. Great job, Mary. Yes. Hey, can you have attendance when I do it? I'll bring you. It goes to, if it goes number one.
And we're excited to be performing Liberty Serenade on the Hamilton stage.
And we're excited to be performing Liberty Serenade on the Hamilton stage. We should have stuck around. We should have shown it immediately after.
That was terrific.
All right.
Mrs. Ross? I just had a comment about the readers. I know this award thing took a long time, but it was well worth it. I mean, the participation for the kids to get involved with it. Reading is so critical. I'm just appreciative of all the schools that have done that. And you saw it was scattered throughout the city, that we had successes all over the schools. So I'm just appreciative of the teachers doing and for the administration pushing this AR thing. Because you could see the look in those kids' eyes. They were very happy to get this award. So if it took us an extra half hour, damn it, it was the best 30 minutes we could have invested.
The idea is success begets success. So hopefully they'll continue to read.
Thank you. Any other comments? Most improved attendance?
Yeah, thank you.
For December.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, President Ross. And our student board member, Mary Sherman, will assist. I was senior from Richwoods. But again, with principals and with classroom teachers intervention, his parents and students, they're continuing to raise the bar this year collectively as we continue to increase our attendance, actually by nearly nine-tenth of a percent when compared to last year's attendance. So it's increased overall as a district. During October, November, and December, we have seen a district-wide gain of more than 1%, including a 1.4 increase overall in December. So that's background. So we have three winners. And so all the schools are working really hard. Each has an individualized attendance plan, but these three came on top for the month of December. And Harrison, we've heard several times, congratulations to Principal Daniel. Please come up. Daniels, please come up. This is your third recognition for the evening, at least. So kudos, third grade, they went from 90% last year in December to 93.18%. So it's a, you've seen for the month of December, a 3.18%. So what's going on? How was that accomplished?
Well, we have started check-in, check-out with our students for attendance, and it has made a huge gain. I will say that I'm just a little bit competitive, and I'm rubbing that off on our students. But we have, every week I do my parent link, and I stress the importance of making sure that our students are at school every day, on time, and stay all day. And the parents are buying into that. So, and our students are enjoying being at school because of the environment that we are creating down in Harrison. Because we are the pride of the South Side. You will see much more of Harrison. And you're welcome to come down and visit.
Beautiful.
Our doors are always open.
Thank you, Mrs. Daniels. It's all about leadership, right? So a second place, thank you. A second place winner. This is the first month this school year that Peoria High did not earn the top spot. However, they did earn number two in December. Peoria High, again, they increased their attendance from 80.44% in December of last year to 85.28% December 2017. And they continue to make improvement. This is a 4.84%. Dr. Coleman, congratulations. Come on, come on down, please. We know you're working very, very hard, and it's working. So your hard work is paying off. Tell us, tell us a little bit.
Well, as the pride of the city, that was stolen, by the way, do want to say that, again, we are competitive as well. So I'm a little upset that we didn't get the top award this month. So I'm coming for it this month, for the month of January, for sure. We're still working hard, still trying to get kids there every day, on time, still giving out the hot chips and all kinds of incentives. So thank you.
Thank you. And I call him Mr. Keller, but Mr. Turner. Keller, actually, congratulations. We've seen you several times. Kudos. You guys are also doing amazing work. Keller made the greatest leap with their increase, 5.17%. Last year around this time, you were 90.53%. And December of 17, well, 2016, 2017, 95.7%. So 5.17%. This is amazing. That is like, almost impossible. But that's fantastic.
Well, there's more to that story.
Tell us more. And congrats.
Thank you. The improvement was just getting back to our average.
Yes.
Last December, we got slammed with illness, right? Mr. Adler? We got slammed with illness. So this, this year, we did actually try to be proactive on that. And we were reminding the kids before the strep and flu season hit, wash your hands, keep your fingers out of your nose, all that. It kind of worked.
Until the adults got two.
So we tried to get ahead of it. And, and I'm glad it worked. Our attendance was much better in December this year than last year. And thankfully, our children like to come to school. And we can encourage that through some of the incentives and the check-in, check-out, and some of the things that our friends are doing as well. But illness was the big deal this time. So thank you for the...
You're welcome. Again, congratulations to Keller and Peoria High and Harrison. And you guys, we know you're working hard, and it's paying off. So kudos to you, and thank you. We also do want to recognize the schools that are in the 95% club. Even though a challenging flu season, as Mr. Turner mentioned, we still have, we've experienced and we've succumbed to this flu season. We have two schools that have maintained 95%. And hey, it's Keller and Washington. So, great job.
On behalf of Washington.
Yeah. Tell Mr. P. We were looking for him today. So that's it, President Ross.
Thank you. Next, we have a district presentation. The PLC, Dr. Wilson and Mr. Copeland. This is about parent feedback.
Hello, President Ross, Dr. Karat, and Board of Education members. I come before you, hopefully looking for an opportunity to give you some information about our parent feedback. According to timeline that we've been talking about, Mr. Copeland and Mr. Welsh and I attended PTO meetings at all three of the high schools. And we were able to talk about the process and answer any questions that they had. And so some of the points that we made during those PTO meetings, and I know you've had a little chance to look at this, but I just want to reiterate that we shared with them the purpose and the definition of what a PLC is, so that we're all of the same understanding. And then the principals had an opportunity to share their own PLC structure within their building. There were some questions about that. So they were able to talk about what it looked like at each individual building. Also, there was a grand discussion about all the opportunities for students during this time, which was really a, not a surprise, but it was really nice to sit back and listen to this open dialogue about problem solving and, more importantly, the opportunities. So the conversation was about all the opportunities that our students could potentially have. And they have all kinds of ideas that came out of it. So it was kind of exciting. We talked about the explanation on how we came up with that amount, so that was helpful for some. And also, the principals at the end really talked about how this might impact their individual schools and some things that they might do. So it was really a nice mix of information, gathering ideas, as well as principals being able to talk specifically about their own school. So it really rounded our journey that we've taken this semester that was started last year. And so we're looking forward to presenting this to you for a final vote this evening, unless you have any further questions.
Questions from board members?
No. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Welch, competency-based learning.
Once again, good evening, Board President Ross, members of Board of Education, Dr. Karat. First, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to share information about the competency-based learning granted our school district was awarded, along with nine other school districts, in the progress that we've made, most recently to offer students a different approach, a more personalized approach in preparation for their career aspirations. And again, I can't emphasize the word "different approach." We often talk about improving existing efforts and initiatives. And with tonight's presentation, we are seeing and will present differences. Joining me tonight is Dr. Coleman from Peoria High and Mrs. Zolkowski from Manuel Academy. After a few comments by myself and a few slides, talking about competency-based education, they will share brand-new programs, brand-new programs that have only been in existence for a few weeks at their schools. Once we received an early Christmas gift from the Illinois State Board of Education, which was the approval of waivers that came to us on December 21st. Both administrators collaborated, and we went into full gear into offering new programs upon the return of school at Peoria High in the following week at Manuel Academy. So let's begin our presentation. The first slide depicts the other schools, the other nine school districts, rather, that are with us in this grant. It's a very collaborative group. We actually met here in Peoria Public Schools, where we had the opportunity to host all other nine school districts this fall in a consortium. We shared ideas, projected different implementation initiatives in our various districts. We also had the opportunity to showcase our students. The culinary students provided lunch. The APSCO students presented an outstanding presentation, both of which programs have elements of competency-based learning in them. And of course, like any other initiative, we also formed a committee. And you can see the various people that have been part of the committee. It's been a great cross-section of teachers, administrators, retired administrators, that have come together in an attempt to see how competency-based learning can impact our student body with a different experience. So let's begin with what are competencies? And this is, this is not easy to define, because just the nature of competency-based education, you can take a look at it, and you can have what in your mind is competency-based, and the person sitting right next to you might have something different, and you're both correct. So competency-based does have some, some commonalities that I would like to go with. First, that knowledge, skills, and/or behaviors students must master in a specific content or performance area. With competency-based learning, students advance upon mastery of essential skills and knowledge, i.e. competencies, without regard to seat, time, or place. And I think those are really two big hallmarks of competency-based education, without regard to seat, time, or place. Competency-based learning, in terms of the ISBE, identifies an earning credit towards graduation requirements in ways other than traditional coursework, including learning opportunities outside their traditional classroom, such as supervised career development experiences, incorporating real-world knowledge and challenges, using knowledge frameworks in progressions to support learner growth, and finally, attaining career-related competencies beyond those needed for high school graduation. And when our two principals describe their programs tonight, you're going to see elements of, not necessarily all of them in each program, but different pieces of them tonight. So competency-based learning permits us to award credit for demonstrated mastery of competencies instead of course attendance or participation. Online learning courses, community service, internships, paid employment, and independent study. Also permits the use of alternative methods for counting course attendance and daily attendance in providing an alternative school year, school day. And those are all part of the waivers that we applied for and were granted on December 21st. Competency-based learning also establishes additional requirements for earning diploma. It can, in many cases, in terms of mastery of competencies, work-based experiences, substituting course requirements and credit hours for graduation with demonstrated mastery of competencies or work-based learning experiences, or enabling students to meet graduation requirements through multiple and flexible pathways. So the waivers, again, going back to the waivers that, once we were identified as a grant recipient with the other nine school districts, each school district then applies for waivers. We were the very, very first district to apply for those waivers, and were granted those waivers. Waivers specifically for, waivers for credit-based courses, statutory attendance in credit requirements. This allows students to earn credits while working towards graduation based on experiences, such as employment, again, internships, and coursework. So you see a common theme throughout. Waivers for traditional coursework required for graduation, so allows students to earn credit toward graduation requirements, including learning outside the traditional classroom setting. And finally, waivers for traditional four-year high school course sequences. And this goes back to the personalization, letting students work at their pace, allowing students meeting entrance exams to local colleges, and the opportunity to take dual credit courses and graduate early from high school is all part of working at possibly an accelerated pace, but essentially, it's a personalized pace. So before I turn it over to Dr. Coleman, these are the four competency-based programs that we're just going to go through with you tonight. We have the options program at both Peoria High and Manuel, the CHIP program at Manuel, and then the teacher pathway that we will run for a second year this summer. This time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Coleman.
Good evening, everyone. The POP program, as we call it, is an alternative way for students to earn their high school diploma. It's for students who are in jeopardy of not meeting the requirements to graduate with their class, or their class has already graduated. The requirements to attend, you must be at least 17 years old, up to 21, have not earned more than 20 credits, and you have to, I've had the parents attend an orientation session with the students. Our program structure is, it's a full day, 7:30 to 2:30, but we have two sessions. So the first session, the AM session, is 7:30 to 10:30. The students come in and they prepare for the equivalency test. Then from 10:30 to 11:30, we do a capstone portfolio, which overlaps with our afternoon session. And then the students from our morning cohort leave and do work or internships or volunteer. And then our students in our afternoon session, they prepare for the equivalency test. The captions program is, or portfolio is, what makes us unique. It's a learning portfolio. The students must have their assessment requirements, which is successful completion of the high school competency exams, successful passage of the government assessments, and they must take the SAT. We also create individual learning plans through our career cruising, and then we do workplace skills, career readiness things. We do the employment 101 modules, where they get certificates for passing those, the EverFi modules. And then the portfolios will be presented to parents and the community upon the completion of the program. The options program, as I mentioned before, all students must pass the Illinois and U.S. Constitution tests and the flag code assessment. They must take the state of Illinois, take the SAT as required by the state of Illinois. They must successfully complete all subject area components of the high school equivalency exam. And they must successfully complete the capstone portfolios, successfully complete 15 hours of classroom instruction per week, and successfully complete the 15 hours of work, community service, or volunteering per week. We have formed partnerships with our, for our capstone, and as far as employment skills, and they're with the Center of Prevention of Abuse, the Holt Center, Peoria Park District, the ROE, Neighborhood House, New Millennium, Career Link, Junior Achievement, and Unity Point Health.
Now, Mrs. Zolkowski is going to talk about her program, who has very, very, a lot of commonality with Peoria High, but there are some differences. She'll go over.
Thank you. Good evening. Our program, really, it mirrors theirs. It runs just like them, only, just like Peoria High, only we offer ours morning only. Our structure was put together differently, making use of teachers that were available and volunteered to do the morning cohort. So 7:30 to 10:30, students work with various teachers on their equivalency test preparation. test preparation. Ten-thirty to eleven-thirty is the capstone portfolio, just as the, outlined by Dr. Coleman. And finally, they are released at the eleven-thirty time to go to work, do some internship, or their volunteer hours.
So, that's the options program that's in place at both schools. Mrs. Zalkowski is going to go ahead and describe a third competency-based program for this evening, which is our CHIP program.
The CHIP program is very exciting. Caterpillar Hiring Innovation Project. This came to us through our collaboration with Caterpillar and Mr. Rice's welding class and manufacturing. So, the Caterpillar Hiring Innovation Project CHIP is a collaborative partnership between Caterpillar and the Peoria Public Schools, designed to provide the high school seniors in the manufacturing pathway at Manuel Academy with a paid apprenticeship, including these opportunities. They develop manufacturing skills such as welding, assembly, and painting, and the essential or the soft skills needed in the workplace. They experience real-life practices through the orientation, hiring, onboarding process for future employment at Caterpillar, and they work with a mentor and Caterpillar ambassador who will provide support, encouragement, and then hope for the future employment. The objective of the program is to provide students with developmental opportunities. They earn credit towards graduation while working. They earn their pay while working, too. And it introduces students to local jobs and local employers and connects the students with the mentor. The requirements, the students must first successfully complete the manufacturing one course or dual-credit welding course that Mr. Rice provides. They have to have senior status in the manufacturing pathway at Manuel Academy. Additionally, they, the students are now taking fifteen hours a week instruction at the high school, and then they transition over to the Caterpillar building, and they get fifteen hours a week of career preparation. In order to gain the competency, they must be successful at both.
I think again, what, eleven dollars an hour?
They make over eleven dollars an hour. And the nice thing about this is their, their soft skills or the essential skills training is actually taking place at Caterpillar while they're there, and they've got the mentors, and they're being brought through the process. The hopes, the hope of Caterpillar is to form, you know, future workers for them, but even should they not be there, they will then be able to, to go out with some very, very essential skills for the future.
Yeah, and the fourth program tonight that we wanted to discuss with you was just the ongoing teacher pathway program that we began last summer when we were awarded the grant. We wanted to really dip our toe in competency-based learning, and we did it in such a way that we also addressed the teacher shortage, the nationwide teacher shortage. Here, students, high school students, can earn a, have a elective credit towards their high school diploma by participating with our elementary summer schools, and participants also attended professional development. They network with their fellow peers. They conducted teacher interviews. They wrote reflection paper addressing those, those four points from classroom characteristics, classroom demographics, classroom management, and also reflected on instructional methods. We interface with the other nine districts quite a bit. Actually, just this morning, I was on a conference call with them, and one of the themes that was brought out, and it was specifically through this quote that I find meaningful and many others do, as part of our committee and have been in touch by competency-based education, is if you're measuring seat time rather than competency, then you're measuring the wrong end of the student. And that really speaks to breaking that old, traditional model and doing something different and getting outside the classroom, getting outside the school for that matter, and really looking at competencies. So, these are our efforts to date. We have other efforts ongoing as well, efforts at, additional efforts at Manuel, within the manufacturing, efforts at Woodruff, specifically through the hair braiding. We have a teacher in Lacy Simmons who's extremely interested in broadening her program in a second year of competencies for students that have mastered for the first year and going on to the second year. Finally, we intend to research competency-based learning in terms of, in terms of the blended model, where students learn a part of the week online and the other part of the week in more of a traditional setting. And here, it offers students the opportunity before they're placed in a college setting where they're expected to be able to effectively learn, communicate, collaborate online, and here, it's a combination of both. Before we throw them out in cyberspace, we want to give them a taste of it in our school district and prepare them for the expectations of, of the rigors of college online courses. So, with that said, we'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Mr. Wilder?
How many students do you have, both Peoria High and Manuel, in these programs?
We have thirty-three.
Okay. And it, man?
I have twenty in the options program, and eight students are in the Caterpillar program.
Okay. What is your plan for Woodruff? You said you looked at maybe expanding those, some of these.
At Woodruff, the teachers, the CTE teachers can take elements of competency-based and inject them into their programs. The example I had, and it goes beyond hair braiding, but the hair braiding teachers is just chomping at the bit to get moving with, with her program and adding elements of competency-based. It lends itself very well.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Sherman?
Is teacher pathway offered at all three high schools or just Central and Manuel?
I'm glad you asked that. It's all three.
Okay. What years of students is that available to?
They're dual-credit classes, so juniors, rising juniors and rising seniors.
Okay.
Another question? Dr. Bauer?
Any possibility of overlap with service learning?
Most definitely, and that is a component of the options program. They can have, they can be gainfully employed, and they can also have an internship. There could be a paid internship as well, and then community service, most definitely. And that in and of itself, because this, this concept can be interpreted and applied in many different settings, they don't necessarily have to be in the options program to get credit for demonstrating competencies as a volunteer in, in an organization. So, the door's wide open. It's very exciting work.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right. Well, now, it's a place on our agenda that provides an opportunity for members of the community to address the board with your comments and suggestions. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific personal concern that needs to be addressed, we will get a staff person to help you. In addition, board members, phone numbers, and emails are listed on the website, PSD150.org. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each person will have, be given five minutes to speak. As a reminder, no one under age eighteen may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, teacher, without the consent of the majority of the boards. Our first speaker this evening is Mr. Jesse McGowan, Jr.
Good evening. My name is Jesse McGowan, Jr., seven oh seven East Thrush, Peoria, Illinois. My reason here this evening is number eight, Family Corps, Denim Approval Counseling Services. I'm happy to see you adding more family school liaisons. I've been pushing for that, so the only concern I have, how can I find out, well, a couple of things, what their jobs are? What are they supposed to do? I mean, my main thing is, do they go in the houses to visit the people if the people can't come to them? Because what I'm concerned is, there should be no child being suspended from school. I don't mean the zero titles, I'm talking about the other kids, without a sit-down from somebody from the school district talking to that parent. And you can't always, in most of the cases, what they do is have the parents to come to them. If you've got a parent out here working at a near minimum wage job, asking them to take off a half a day to come to see, meet you, that's causing that parent hardship. If that parent can't come to you, you need to go to him. This should not be a nine-to-five, a eight-to-four job or whatever. It shouldn't be an office job. You know, and I understand some of the neighborhoods they may be afraid to go into, but if they are, I have a group of guys called a street committee. We will escort them in and out of those neighborhoods. If you need to be there eight o'clock at night, ten o'clock at night, whatever it is to meet with that parent, they will take you in there and bring you back out again. And if you're afraid of getting shot, we're standing in front of you. But because, and that's basically what it is. A lot of people are afraid to go to their neighborhoods. But we need to sit down with those parents before any child is suspended or expelled, and they should be on their report when they make it back to you, whether they meet their parent, when they meet their parent, how they met the parent, whatever. Because many times, you're going to be able to find out more by visiting in that home. You can find a lot more about that parent inside at home, you will, if that parent come to your office. So, that's the thing, to me, a family liaison should be just that, a liaison between the parent and the school, not the other way around, the parent coming to the school. So, I'm just wondering, how can I find out what they're supposed to do? Because I ask Family Corps, they give me one thing. I ask people from the administration, they tell me something else. Is there a way I can find out exactly what they are supposed to doing, what they are supposed to be doing, so that I can make recommendations back to whoever the appropriate person is to make sure they're doing it? Because I don't think Family Corps is actually doing everything they're supposed to do. Because I understand that a lot of management style is, appoint good people, get out of the way, and let them do it. But my philosophy is, inspect what you expect. So, that's, that was the thing I just liked to know about. Thank you.
Ms. Sharon Coles?
Please do not doubt that my motivation for presenting data to you is always my desire for students to graduate with the self-discipline to survive in the world on their own and with the academic knowledge to reach their next goal. The world has not always been kind to many of our students and their parents, et cetera. Sometimes I get the feeling that you want to go easy on them to make up for the past. I understand that motivation, but it is not preparing students for the future. Because you care about them, you're in a position to make them understand that being tough on them now will get them ready for a world that is not always kind or fair yet. I read in yesterday's paper and then here tonight that you may go to the opposite direction. History should prevail. We already did Glasser's schools without failure, and it failed. At Peoria High, in the first seventy-one days of this school year, two thousand five hundred and twenty-three referrals were written for behavior problems and about one thousand for cutting classes. With regard to the consequences meted out for students for bad behavior, I was quite happy to find that only twenty-one detentions were issued. That particular consequence creates nothing but chaos. Probably the only consequence that created an inconvenience for students was Saturday school. Of the three thousand five hundred and thirty-six students who received referrals, the consequences for one thousand fifty-two was Saturday school. I don't know how many of that number didn't show up on Saturday or what the punishment is for, for that. Thirty-seven referrals were issued for behavior at Saturday school. In-school suspensions were the consequence for eight hundred and nineteen student behaviors, and out-of-school consequences were issued for two hundred and sixty. And I agree, suspensions aren't the best answer. Time out of class is not a punishment unless students realize or care that their grades are affected. I'm not sure that's true. A consequence I still do not understand, the referral rewrite was issued for five hundred and eighty-three referrals. The other consequences probably do little to change behavior. One strong indication that the discipline policies are not changing behaviors is that the twenty days of December, six hundred and twenty-seven referrals were issued. For the twenty days of October, the number went up to nine hundred and twenty-nine, a three hundred and two increase. There were only eighteen days in November, but the number of referrals was nine hundred and three. Those numbers cannot be ignored. The whole purpose of coming to school is to get a diploma. If students can pass courses and get diplomas without changing their behaviors, the chaos that exists today will continue. I am sure that there are many repeat offenders, but I didn't receive the information needed to assess the number of repeaters. Undoubtedly, there are classrooms that have very few offenders and that the most offenders are freshmen and sophomores. Until a better solution is found, repeat offenders just must be taken out of regular classrooms. That is true of primary and middle school also, and getting substantial education, too. In seventy-one days, a classroom was disrupted two thousand eight hundred and four times. Considering that each classroom disruption takes a minimum of fifteen minutes, that's a loss of seven hundred and sixteen hours of teaching and learning time. The real losers are the students who come prepared to learn. They are being cheated every day. Of the one thousand students who cut classes, one hundred and eighty-one were found in hallways, the cafeteria, outside, and in various other locations. The other eight hundred were just missing, it appears. That number should alarm you since that means that you don't know where they were or what they were doing, and schools are responsible for students that are under their jurisdiction. I do believe that only twelve drug offenses and seven instances of, of gang activity are the result of difficulty in detecting these activities. These two offenses should be given adequate attention in all schools at all levels. A warning I read in the PJ Star, I will leave you with, remember the discrimination of low expectations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Terry Nack?
Yes, I want to thank you for your presentation tonight. I thought it was excellent regarding this. It was kind of a shock to people who read this in the paper, especially when it refers to three things. If you're looking at it, no funding, I mean, I guess this isn't going to cost anything, right? Says no funding is being provided. Number two, no Fs are to be given, no failing grades are to be given. And number three, you mentioned in the presentation tonight, instead, there was a phrase in there, instead of course attendance. I think attendance is critical. If we, if we turn our head from attendance, and that's what your overhead suggested, if you turn your head from attendance, you're cheating the kids. When they go to work and get a job, the number one thing that companies are looking for is good attendance if you're going to advance with that company. Otherwise, you'd just be sent to the exit door. So, think about those things. I would like to also mention, we had a conversation last week about TIF districts. When I was in Florida, Carrie Alms called me, and I invited Dr. Karat, Mr. Willis, and Mr. McKenzie, and others, I did, actually invited Dr. Karat, and they attended a meeting last week at eight o'clock in the morning, zero degrees, and it was really appreciated by the public in attendance. I know she has reported to you, I think all the board members received some type of input back, at least that's what I heard, and I think that's critical. I gave you a handout tonight that shows where the TIF districts are. I don't know that you got that piece of information. I thought it was interesting. I saw that today, so I copied that for you. I think it's very important that the board members educate themselves on TIF districts if you haven't, because most board members have not. And it's critical that you become aware of TIF districts as they're coming up. One is coming up in the near future in the south of Peoria, and it's already been suggested by a councilwoman that we extend that TIF. The TIFs have killed this district financially. You know, many communities have TIF, most communities have TIF districts, but they, many of them share the monies with the school district, and I think that that's something you need to pursue. We need to get people... We need to get people in the community to get behind you so that you receive money from that, as well as the ninety-five, the eighty-five million dollars from the riverboat that you got no money from. I think that that's terrible, that the city looks at kids in that particular way. So good luck, and you'll get support from the district. I want to say I was in Florida, and I turned on my TV, it was kind of channel service, and it hit the golf channel, and Condoleezza Rice was being interviewed. If you don't know Condoleezza Rice, which I'm sure all of you do, but if you don't know her, it was a terrific interview. I'm going to pull it from YouTube and give you a copy to keep in the district office so you can all see it. But Condoleezza Rice was interviewed, and she was asked about, you know, fine arts in particular, and I'm going to dwell on that particular point again. I think under our previous superintendent, Lathan, our fine arts for eight years went in the tank. I know I had a conversation with the young lady sitting here about bands. I want to say that the Canton Band performed at the Bradley Girls game the other day afterwards, because I taught at Canton. I went up and talked to the band director, and I asked how many students had performed at Bradley, and they were outstanding. They played the whole game, the whole game during the game and everything else. He said they had a hundred and thirty-five pieces. They have a hundred and seventy pieces in their program. Our combined students in the high schools of Peoria do not have a hundred and seventy members, and Canton's a small high school. Morton, I talked to the gentleman who was the band director at Woodruff, he was at the , excuse me, Brenfield, he said they have a hundred and eighty-five pieces at Morton. I mean, we have got to make an effort to bring fine arts back, and Condoleezza Rice talked about that. She also mentioned another thing, and I think it's important in closing, that you not allow teachers to get into the political arena and try to influence their students about being Republican or being Democrat or who they back. This is a dead end for schools and for people. She was asked a question at the end of her interview, and the interviewer said to her, you know, what does it feel like when you and Colin Powell are called Uncle Toms? And she said to the interviewer, and I thought it was just totally appropriate, she said, I have been black my entire life, I don't need somebody to tell me how to be black. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any response to audience presentation?
I'd like to comment on Mr. McGowan's comments. If you've been here before in previous meetings, you'll see, you'll recall that you and I think a lot alike. And understanding, if we're writing a check for some folks, and they're supposed to be doing stuff for us, it's real important that we know what they're doing and what the outcome is of what they're doing. And so I take a lot of that away from your comments, and I appreciate them. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. May I have a motion of approval for the January eighth, two thousand eighteen minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carrying.
Thank you. Information items, the first reading of update policy seven, colon, one, zero, equal educational opportunity. Mr. Shaw?
Okay, so, submitted for your first reading. This policy, seven, ten, just cleans up some language, and it adds gender, identity, immigration status, and order protection status as protected classes. So it's pretty, you know, pretty simple. This was something that Mr. Redberg was working on before he retired, and we're just trying to close up the point.
Well, first reading, anyone have any questions on that? Thank you. Proposed expenditures over twenty-five hundred dollars. Any questions of Mr. Willis? No? Good. Freedom of request under the request, report, of request for the Freedom of Information Act and the status of such request.
Thank you. Since our board report on January eighth, we received two requests. Of those, zero were filled. There were also two pending requests noted on January eighth. One was withdrawn, and one request has not been filled. So we have received four requests for this calendar year. Thank you.
Consent agenda?
Good evening. The consent agenda consists of eleven items tonight. Item number one is gifts to the school district. This meeting, three thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-five cents. Year-to-date, fifty-three thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-two cents. Item number two is the payment of bills. Item number three is the payment for travel. Item four is a human resources report. Item five is the approval of board policy seven, colon, one fifty, quote, safe haven policy. Item number six is the field trip approval for Lindbergh eighth grade class trip. Item number seven is the Richwoods HVAC project. Item number eight is the high school PLC plan. Item number nine is the Family Corps addendum approval for counseling services. Item number ten is the approval of the memorandum of understanding for local number seven eighty, FY eighteen joint RIF committee. And item number eleven is the meeting dates for the Board of Education for FY twenty-eighteen nineteen. And that is the entirety of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like to pull for separate vote?
I would like number eight pulled.
Number eight. Okay.
Number four, please.
Number four.
And number nine.
Okay. Any others? Okay, may I have a motion and a second on all items except number eight, nine, four, eight, and nine?
I move that we adopt all the items of the consent agenda with the exception of items four, eight, and nine.
Second.
Is there any discussion on any of those items? Questions or comments on items that we just, okay. Seeing now, would you call the roll?
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carrying.
Item number four, human resources report? Mr. Dr. Bond?
I don't have enough information to vote on that. That all.
Okay. All right, may I have a motion and a second on item number four?
I move that we adopt item four, the human resources report.
Second.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson Aviles?
No.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay, motion carrying.
Item number eight?
So we've talked about the high school PLC plan at length, and I have great appreciation for the process that was gone through in order for the committee to arrive at the recommendation to the board. Great respect for the people, including the union team and our administrators who worked on this, understanding there's a lot of things to balance. That being said, I have to weigh my vote on whether or not this was the best product that the process and the people could produce. I just, I feel this proposal lacks something in those arenas. We had a lot of discussion about PLCs last year and received a lot of heated emails and phone calls for things that resembled very closely this proposal. So there is a ton to be gained in reducing the teacher shortage in this proposal. There's a budgetary benefit to it, and it alleviates some other stresses on our system, and I'm grateful for those impacts, but I cannot support this proposal.
Any other comments or questions on this item? May I have a motion and a second?
I have a question for Mr. Adler.
Let me get the motion and second first, okay. Sorry about that. Have a motion? Motion and a second.
Probably prudent for somebody else to move it.
Okay. I move that we accept item number eight, the high school PLC plan.
A second. Thank you. Now discussion? Mr. Walter?
If I, just clarification from Mr. Adler. Would your, if this was in fact voted down, would you like to send back to the PLC committee to reevaluate it? I was just trying to get a sense of direction where you were at.
I think that's a question probably for Dr. Karat, how she'd like to deal with it if it would in fact go down, but.
I think at this point, it's, it's a motion. I mean.
I understand. I just needed a clarification from Mr. Adler. Thank you.
I guess I was going to ask the same question that he has asked. So, right now, it can't be sent back and reviewed, or is that what you were saying?
No, that's not what I was saying. We were, we got a motion and second, and we were on discussion at this point. So I didn't say it couldn't be, I mean, we have a process by which something can be tabled, but is that what you, is that what people want?
It's my sense that staff has exhausted, you know, all discussions to get to this point. So I don't want to be, you know, the boulder in the road, but I, you know, we're talking about an eighty percent reduction in the time, and that's only one metric, but time of collaboration at the high school level, talking about an hour of lost instruction. Again, this is time. And there were options on the table earlier that I felt were better. They weren't the ones that ended up on our doorstep. I can appreciate that. I'm just kind of putting it out there.
But sometimes the better ones are not the ones that you can jam down through people's throats. We have to work collaboratively, and we did. This proposal came from the union. We're not going to get anything better. This will alleviate, assist, relieve teacher shortage greatly. It saves us how much money?
Seven.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it's not over. There's still another stage to it in terms of the later, the later start time. And so this is, we had to decouple, you know, we couldn't, I don't think we could have gotten this and the later start time all at once within the timeframe. It needed to be decoupled, and that's what we did. We spent almost two years on this. I think, you know, this is, and we gave you, we kind of went very slow, we went slowly to go far and did not rush it through and took a lot of time. And even tonight, Dr. Wilson shared with you that they went, the team went to all of the PTOs at all of the schools, and the parents were very, they were favorable, and they were in support and gave us additional ideas. So it's a great product, I think, and the beautiful thing about it, it was done collaboratively with, with the teacher union and teacher representation. Don't forget, we're also getting equity or equality, because what we had, only the core teachers were, were getting this, this time to collaborate and problem solve with their peers. So English teachers, math teachers, science teachers, the other teachers were not receiving PLCs. This, this, this model, everyone, there will be what the teachers call equity, and so everybody's receiving it. And, and so I understand the later start piece, and we have a committee that started, that it's up and going, and the first meeting was last week, and I suspect there will be tons of more meetings to go, but sometimes we have to go slow to go far and chunk it and decouple it, take one bite at a time.
And, you know, if I could just say that, that this process really has, has not, in my mind, proven the way we've been doing, has not, not proven to me that, you know, that the results were there from, from what we were doing. And I like this better because now you have more teachers able to take advantage of that. You know, every, every time we have a change, we, we add to it, but we don't really measure it. So I really think this is, this is probably as, as Mr. Adler said, the best that they're going to bring back to us, unless we just, you know, scrap things altogether. So is there either any more? Yes, sir.
My comment is not on the relative merits or lack thereof of either the original program or proposal, and it's simply a parliamentary procedure. Thank you, Dr. Karat, for providing these little handy-dandy things for us. In terms of a parliamentary motion, there is the offer, there's the options of moving it, amending it, or referring it, or postponing it. And so you can refer this to committee. I'm just saying that that's an option. I'm not telling anybody what to do, I'm just clarifying things. Thank you.
My comment was, that was why I asked that question, because of those four choices. But as speaking to the motion parliamentary where we're at right now is that I will support this, I think, for the reasons that Dr. Karat said. I agree with some valid points Mr. Adler thinks, but I think this is, I really love the process, the way it got here and the stuff with it. So, and I think, while it may not be perfect, it's one that I'm comfortable living with for a whole lot of reasons, so.
Mr. Shaw?
I will also support it. I did get a whole lot of feedback in the beginning of this process, negative feedback from teachers and parents. What impressed me is the silence during the last, last few weeks on this issue, which means that, you know, it kind of suggests that people are accepting of this solution. One parent did call me last week with concerns about early release and this, you know, the problems that that can cause. So I'm hoping that there are some after-school activities and things available for parents to, for students to, to attend.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this issue?
I will also vote for it. I'm like Board Member Shaw, I just had a lot of question marks in my head and listened to what the input I was getting. So I will support this. I think that I don't want to tie anyone's hands, and I want things to be done, and that's for the benefit of all of our staff members. So I will, I will vote for this, this service.
Yes, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
I'm going to support this, but spoiler alert, I'm going to, as I mentioned the last time we discussed this, and I will be using the same rationale for another item. I'd like to make sure that we're accountable to what we're doing. If we're doing this, these, this PLC plan, then I think it behooves us to have a full and transparent accounting of what its effects are, where it worked, where it didn't work, where it could be improved, where things should be scrapped, full and transparent.
Any other comments? Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Walter?
Could you please restate the question? What we're voting on, we're voting on this, up or down? Is that basically? I just want to be clear. Okay. Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Nay.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay, motion carrying.
If I may, number nine? We're finally number nine.
All right, so there's a spoiler. It's nice for at least once not to be the only single nay in the room. By way of repetition, we're spending nearly half a million dollars on Family Core, a chunk of that through Title I funds that can be spent other places. And on July seventeenth of last year, we did get a report back, at which point, from Family Core, at which point I mentioned that it was the minimum that I would have expected. And much of that report, as you will recall, had to do with simple numbers being referred. We saw this many students, we saw that many students. I was grateful for at least that, but I would have wanted to see more of a causal effect, or at least a correlation effect of this is what we're doing, and this is what got better. As you'll recall during that time, I complimented Children's Home on their thoroughness of their program evaluation, and in the design of it, and in the outcome measures of it, they were outstanding. In this case, I'm asked to approve spending yet again without a single note in terms of how this chunk of money is going to be held accountable, and I just can't do that. And I believe this is urgent. We, we just talked about saving seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a PLC plan where I wanted complete and transparent outcomes, and yet here we go again, and it would be hypocritical if I were to support this in the absence of anything like that. And as I've said before, and Mr. McGowan, as you reminded me, if you're gonna come up here and ask us to write a check, you'd better show me how you're gonna defend that and what the outcomes are. And so far, the glaring omissions have been, to a certain degree, Family Core, and to a much larger degree, elite. So, I am not going to support this.
We have a, well, we have a motion in second on that.
I move that we adopt item number nine, the Family Core Denim Approval for Counseling Services.
Second.
Any other comments for Mr. Walther?
I would, I will support this. I do recognize Dr. Bob, Mr. Dr. Vila's concern. I have the same concerns. When we both came on board at the same time, there were several issues that we were thrown at us as new board members. This was one of them, and that was the accountability part that we have. I would have been very much in favor of an amendment to have them do a full reporting of what they did, how many students they contacted, and what the outcomes were. I agree with them. I thought that their, their report last year was minimal at best. But if our choice is to support this up or down, I will support it up or down, but I would like to see the same transparency from them, because every dollar we spend is precious here. I mean, we saved seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on this, you know? We need to know that these outputs, we're spending five hundred thousand dollars, are they helping? I think they are, but I don't think we know. I don't think, any of us around this table can say exactly that they've done a really good job, but they've done a really bad job. I don't think we've had enough, they've gotten given us enough information to make that, make that decision. Having said that, because the choice is up or down, I will support this, but I, I understand the concerns, Dr. Bob.
Other comments?
Points well taken, and we were working with them, and they've given us, actually last week at one of our AIO meetings, they submitted some data. Derek walked us through it, Mr. Booth walked us through it, so I'll make sure the board receives it, but fantastic feedback, and we'll continue to work with them. It's much, much better, Dr. Bob. I think you will, you will be pleased, and any additional feedback, we'll continue to work with them, but significant improvement since we started. Thank you.
Other comments? We have a motion on the floor, first and second. Would you please call the row, please?
Mr. Walther?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Abulis?
No.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay, motion carried.
We are at our deliberation agenda, number twelve, a resolution in support of the school's security legislation. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve a resolution that would authorize Peoria Public Schools to employ properly trained security personnel to either carry firearms while on duty, or, while on duty, or, or school property, or have access to firearms on school property in emergency situations, warranting the use of firearms.
I move that we adopt the resolution in support of school security legislation.
Second.
There was a second? Is there any discussion? Ms. Jackson?
I, I would like, first of all, I'd like to know how many of the security people that will have to go through the academy? And what is the cost?
Me, actually?
If you know the answer.
Yeah, but I have to go look for it, because I believe Chief Boone provided that to us in a PowerPoint last time.
Approximately ten.
Yeah, that's the meeting, I was not here, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There, there are ten that have to go to the, through the academy?
Approximately.
And what is the total cost of each person?
Do you remember that, Ms. Ross?
Yeah, it's sixty-one hundred dollars, but the report that you received indicated that part of that you would get back from, from the state. And...
How much?
About four thousand, right?
Supposedly, we would get back four thousand or so. And that, the report that he, that he submitted indicated that some of the individuals would be able to go to ICC for forty hours. That's a test that you have to pass without any...
Cost?
No, it's a test you have to pass without any, any errors at all in order to be certified in that area. So, I'm understanding that this resolution is, is to actually start a legislative process. So, I'm just, I'm not sure exactly all the details. Did you have any additional details, Mr. Willis?
I didn't, other than the, you know, the presentation.
Okay.
Which I could try to find.
Okay.
What, what happens if, when they go to the academy and they don't pass the academy?
They don't get certified.
And they remain with the district?
Well, that, that remains to be seen.
Yeah, so the conversation that we've had is that this resolution is really in support of starting a legislative process that would be necessary in order for us to do anything, the specific organizational details, and the specifics around exactly which employees get certified, and kind of the path from there, a sort of secondary step that would still have to come back through us.
And it says to employ properly trained, so not necessarily everybody, but, you know, pilot in, in a, in a progressive way.
And I think what we're looking at is the, is the concept, so to speak. I will not be supporting it only because, but I will, you know, support whatever the majority comes up with or decides to do, but, but it only, the only reason is because I worked so hard on trying to develop a different relationship with children and staff. So, you know, over the years, so that's, that'd be my only reason. We, we were not responsible for the, for the firearms being taken out of the school. That was a little bit of a clue, so.
Right, I understand that. Then, or am I hearing that if you don't pass it, if you don't pass police academy, we can make the decision that they can't come back here? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I don't think we're at that point yet, and that's...
Well, I, I think we have to think about all those things.
Yes, that's part of...
I, I think part of it is thinking about it, about, you know, because there's always a possibility. I've worked for, for two cities, and people go to the academy and they fail all the time. And, and, of course, we lost the money, or, you know, so it's, you're not guaranteed passing that academy. And so what happens if eventually we're setting the motion, because this is what I'm, I'm hearing you say, we're setting the motion to get this change so that people can carry guns. Is that correct?
Some people, only...
Okay.
Only properly trained, so not everybody, based on the information that, yeah.
Well, there's another caveat. I mean, the resolution says and/or have firearms on site in case they need them, but if it only said have firearms on site as needed, then I would have supported it. But, but it's the and/or is this kind of...
Well, I guess, I guess I'm reading here that this would authorize Peoria Public Schools to employ properly trained, or if you go to the academy and you pass, that's, you shouldn't be properly trained. While on duty, on school property, or have access to firearms on school property in emergency situations. What that says to me, you'll have people that don't have guns on, but there's guns on site, and how do you get to those guns that's on site? That doesn't make any, any sense to me.
That, of course, would be logistics, basically.
Yeah.
She can speak before me.
Okay, I wanted to make sure that she was finished.
Oh, okay.
So, since we can guarantee, and, and, and we also can guarantee that if we decide to do this, that the state will change their mind. Is that correct? And if the state changes their mind, what leverage do we have if somebody comes back, they don't pass the academy, and you decide to, since they're not properly trained, they're on site, what do you call them? What do they do? And what happens after that? I, there's so many questions that I think I have. I can't make a good decision on this, because I know how that works. And I'm not sure I, I fully understand how, how we are, Peoria School District, are gonna help make this change. And, and if it's made, what do we do as a board to make sure we have properly trained security personnel?
Thank you, Ms. Sherman.
From a student perspective, this is the first time I've heard anything about it, and I think just, I don't honestly know much about this, because I just heard of it, but from a student perspective, right off the bat, hearing guns in schools makes me nervous. I don't care who has them, it makes me nervous. And I think there should be, I understand this is a starting point for this conversation, but there should be direct input from parents and from students about what it needs to have guns in school, because there are just countless stories of poor logistics and small mistakes that have large repercussions, and I think there's just a public image also that comes associated with having guns in schools and what that means about what we think of our students. So, I think there's just a larger conversation that needs to be had, and maybe I just don't know a buff about it yet, but I have a feeling some other students may feel as I do, and maybe even teachers.
Thank you for your comments. Dr. Bob, you had your hand up, and then Mr. Walther had his hand up.
Well, a couple of things. I think, clarify a few things. One, we already do have guns in schools. And Chief Boone, in his rationale, explained that there was, that there were two competing proposals here. The current police, and the current MOU that we have with the City of Peoria Police costs somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That's a year, that's a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine. And, and we have armed police officers in Manuel Peoria High and Richwoods High Schools currently. The proposal, explained by Chief Boone, and I'm not speaking for him, please, but I'm just speaking from his PowerPoints, is that we have currently ten officers, what we call the academy is really PTI, Police Training Institute. After decertification, we lost several officers due to that event. Jordan Bond went to Peoria Police, Cory Olson went to the sheriffs, Jermaine Taylor went to Washington, Mike Brown went to Washington, James Frost went to Fond du Lac, Sergeant James Donald went to the federal courthouse, Sergeant Brian Riewerts went to the federal courthouse, David Myes and Amanda Hahn left. They left, they, we hired officers without PTI. He proposed to send ten officers to PTI, which would cost sixty thousand dollars. That's if all ten went. There was an anecdotal comment that he believed not all ten would go. The resultant police force would, and Ms. Jackson, you bring up a good point, and I don't recall that we had any resolution to this, but there would be two tiers or two levels of persons employed by police, by our security personnel, one who are armed and one who are not, both of whom would be trained, however. The ten, the ten officers to PTI would cost sixty thousand dollars. The Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standard Board refunds an agency, being us, and all we, out of pocket would be four, four hundred dollars per officer, or four thousand for the ten officers PTI certified. The possibility of going to PTI and not passing exists, which is Chief Boone's anecdotal comments, where he thought that the ones who would go would pass, and that there, we have personnel working for us who would simply choose not to want to do that. There were, there was an additional law enforcement refresher courses, firearm certification, psychological and polygraph testing. The refresher course was no cost. Certification for firearms, you have to qualify, that'll be a cost, somewhere around two thousand dollars for ammunition. Polygraph test, five hundred and seventy-five for new hire. No, no idea now in terms of what the insurance cost would be. He talked about gains, cost savings. He had one, two, three points out of gains. One would be cost savings, meaning the savings of having our, our own officers versus nearly a hundred and eighty thousand dollar MOU. And that would make us eligible for certified law enforcement grants pertaining to school police. So, there's a, there's a revenue fund available to us that we can't use at this point. He talked about, and this is more along the lines, Ms. Sherman, what you may have been thinking about, and parents as well, that there's discernment, there would be discernment on the part of the school officers, that these aren't just any, this isn't, isn't anybody. This is somebody who's specifically trained to work in schools, and for many of our police officers who've already worked in schools, and I want to think about, for example, when I first started here nearly twenty years ago, there was an officer at Roosevelt, I think, when I was over there, and he was beloved. I mean, the kids just absolutely adored that guy. Some of the gains in terms of juvenile slash law enforcement development, as Doc, as Chief Boone described it, adjusting arrests, using intervention approaches, trial outcomes could be more beneficial through this. There would be SEL merging with the State Attorney's Office. PPS specifically trains officers for emotional support, and officers could be the point of more student and parent engagement. So, it's another way of policing that's not, and in point of fact, one might, one might look at a parallel activities going on in, in terms of, quote, "traditional policing" as involved, as opposed to community policing, and I'm thinking about the police officer who I know owns a house on the East Bluff. So, there's not just one model, and it's not the traditional police model that some folks think about. Safety was a concern. The fact that we would have armed officers, the key here was to respond to an outside threat. Because of this, the additional training that somebody would need through PTI just simply ups the level of the game in terms of training. In terms of turnover, we would have stronger recruitment longevity. longevity. Our emergency response time and response strength would be faster and, and more robust. I am in favor of this. I think it's been well thought out. I trust Chief Boone's judgment, and I trust his captain's judgment, and the other officers as well, but certainly their leadership has been very thoughtful and very transparent with us. And so I will be supporting this, and I think in the long run, it'll be much better for us.
It's not that I, I, I don't, I'm sorry, Mr. Walter.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I will be speaking in favor of it, too. Just a couple of points. I think Mrs. Jackson raises a good point, but we're actually, that's about three points down the road. All this thing asks you to do is to support it. And while I obviously respect everyone's vote on this, because I have been also the one or the two negative votes, I think a 7-0 positive vote sends a message to the PTI board, that the board supports the concept. All we're doing with this is trying to get enabling legislation. The other details that we're talking about have to be worked out after that. It's going to be a long haul to get this. This is not a slam dunk. We're going to have to do some legislative hard pulling to do that, if it does get through that. But I think a lot of the advantages that Dr. Bob talked about are already here. This is an issue for a couple of reasons, I think, is an advantage of us. A, it saves us money. I mean, we're talking close to $200,000. B, to your concern about the guns in the school, I understand that concern. We've had, we had guns in the school for, for 15 years here, prior to this, when you were more of a youngster. But we have police right now that are city policemen that have guns in the school right now. And with all due respect, the city policemen, they're trained different than, than our campus police are, because they're trained to work with the students in that, with it. And they get to know the kids, they know, they know the situations. And my fear is safety for the officers. We had an officer at Lincoln earlier this year that a seventh grader had been suspended. Her father came to school, very upset about that, pulled the knife on our, on our police officer. All she had was pepper spray. There was nothing she could do to defend herself, and that was in, that was in a middle school. And I hate to bring up that a number of years ago, there was a school called Sandy Hook, and there were 27 children and a couple of teachers that were shot there. There was no defense at that school. For me, this is a safety issue. Believe me, I'm not a big gun person, but for me, this is a safety issue for our kids. And I would like to have these schools safe. And if we have somebody there, you don't have to wait for a five or six minute reaction time from Peoria Police Department. If we have our own trained campus police, and I liked about it when, when Chief Boone was talking about it, how he's working with Derek Boone and the SEL, and this is all going to be part of that, that you've got that kind of thing, and you may be able to really head off some trouble and stuff with it, because you can identify, they know in the schools who are the kids that maybe are having a little bit of trouble or the ones that are doing that. So, you know, for all those reasons, I, I do support this. For me, it's, it's, it's not only a cost issue, it's a safety issue. And the other thing is, it's legislation that we have to work on to get there. And at that point, Ms. Jackson raises a good point, but the reality is, we have a two-tiered, I think, Mr. Nick, you understand, we, right now, I think we've got a multi-tiered level. And so if somebody didn't pass it, they would probably be at a lower tier than somebody who was armed. Those are details we can work out later. This is just the initial proposal. We would, I would just ask for the board to support this so we can just start the process of trying to get the legislation through, so.
I, I'm asking questions because you've got to make decisions after this. And if you decide, if we decide that's the direction we want to go, salary comes in play. What do you play, the ones that carry guns, and what do you play the ones that don't pay or carry guns? That becomes an issue. And, and I, like I said, dealing with cities and police departments, polygraphs where you lose a lot of people. I, I can tell you horror stories about thinking you got a great person, and they go to take that polygraph and you send it to people, and you end up with two. I mean, that's not unusual. So I'm going on what I know and what I've done as I work with the Police and Fire Commission of cities. So this whole thing is, we've got to start thinking about how do we deal with those that pass, those that don't pass? What do we do about the salary? What happens when you send 10 and two come back from a polygraph because eight of them failed it? And you have, you know, the polygraph examiners in Iowa, the one that most cities use, do we, we have to send them there to the, there are a lot of things going through my head. And in order for me to be clear on how we're going to handle it, so people understand what they're getting into, when you start talking about sending people to PTI and all the other things that come afterwards, once the state decides we're going to let them carry guns. And then we get into fight, like most cities, is that didn't fail the polygraph? Is that discriminatory? Is, do we have minorities going to pass the polygraph and don't, and fail it? So there are a lot of things you have to think about as we move through this whole thing. And I just wanted to, to bring those up. It's not that I totally oppose this, but we've got to think about what we're getting into when we decide to do this, and what impact it's going to have on those people that we have working for us that may not get through the whole process. So just my two cents, since I've been working with police departments for a very long time, and I know what happens. So.
Well, we have a vote on the floor, but I do want to just say to Ms. Sherman, I mean, I, all the research I've done does not support guns in school, and I agree with you. It really scares me. And, but that's why I'm not supporting it. But we have a motion and a second on the floor, so if there are no other comments.
Mr. Walter?
Definite aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
I'm not definite, but aye.
Definitely, because you just said aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Dr. Davis and Aviles?
A very thoughtful aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Nay.
Six ayes, one nay. Motion carried.
Okay. Number 13, expulsions.
Proposed action that the expulsion listed on the report dated January 22nd, 2018, be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Dr. Davis and Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes. Motion carried.
Revacation of board probation. Proposed action that the revocation of board probation listed on the report dated January 22nd would be to be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Dr. Davis and Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Walt, Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes. Motion carried.
Okay, presentations by, suggestions by board members. I would like to, for us to recognize that, where's Chris Copeland? Today is his birthday. Happy birthday, Chris. Any other presentations or suggestions by board members?
Just a suggestion. We have a recurring theme, and I think that, that theme has some merit, that some of the agencies working for Peoria Public Schools do not provide adequate reporting. So I'm recommending that at the contract, at the time we renew or we begin a contract, that we enumerate and define what we want as far as reporting and the frequency of reporting.
Okay. Other, yes, Mr. Walter?
Actually, just a compliment to the whole board. I think we had some really good discussion on a number of issues tonight. When we pulled the items that were out, I think it was, I think it's good for the public to hear us debate those issues and have those issues. It's transparency that a lot of other boards don't see. And so actually, I'm patting ourselves on the back, but I think it was just good to see, it was refreshing to hear, have that kind of dialogue. So I just wanted to thank the board for that.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank Mr. Shaw for his very insightful comment just now.
Reports for, from board committees?
The Parent Teacher Advisory Committee will meet next Wednesday, January 31st. And on the agenda include topics about parent engagement, which I understand Mr. McGowan is going to help us talk through.
Okay. Mr. Shaw?
The Policy Committee will meet Wednesday, February 21st at 9:30 a.m.
If I'm not mistaken, the Building Committee will be making, meeting February 6th, the 6th?
January 25th, Thursday.
January 21st. Oh, I was thinking about that. I want to mention that, too.
Right.
On, on February 6th, is that correct?
Yes.
At Woodrow Wilson?
Yes.
Yes.
We will be meeting the community to talk about the name change for the school. We just encourage everybody to come out, and let's discuss it, and, and we're all open to listen to what people have to say. And it'd be at Woodrow Wilson, which is a school we've identified to have the name change.
I just thought about this. You know the, the pictures, portraits we have of schools that are in the hallway back there, the next, that's next to the media room? Do we have pictures of schools from the past that we no longer own, or that might have been demolished, but they are still a part of our history?
No, just the current ones.
Just the current. Would it not?
I bet the newspaper has.
I'm just wondering if, if we, you know, we obviously honor our buildings as they're going, but maybe just an idea to honor our past as well?
Yeah, we can.
Just thinking about it.
We usually get those from a photographer as a bonus, so we'll look into that. I think it's a good idea. I have some, I have some photos I did two years ago that someone sent for me from California. He went to a museum, and so those can be enlarged. I think one was Longfellow, one was Greeley, and there were three schools, and I saw them this weekend.
The only one I haven't seen was Sip.
Sip?
Sip was on the corner where Chili's is.
Really?
It's torn down, yeah.
So, Chris, we have some work to do.
Just to follow up, Daphne indicated the Building Committee will be meeting at 3:30 on the 25th. And to follow up with Ms. Jackson, we discussed at the Building Committee on the procedure for renaming schools, and we're looking at Woodrow Wilson. We're going to be meeting on February 6th at Woodrow Wilson. We will put out an announcement. We want input from the public on that. And then we're going to be meeting at Valeska Hinton on?
February 22nd.
February 22nd, for the same thing, for input from the public. We, we just want to be transparent, get feedback from the people as to where they're at with that, so.
What time was it on February 6th?
7 p.m.
7.
Daphne's done all the legwork for us on contacting building principals and getting time and all that stuff for you, so that's why I'm deferring to.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think you used up all your phone of friends.
Yeah.
Also, I, I just want to thank Ms. Sherman for stepping in. This wasn't her night, but she comes to the meeting, our student board member, and she stepped in and, and did a great job as usual. Thank you.
And provided great feedback on the legislation. Thank you.
Anything else, by the good of the?
Doug, can you just confirm that the Policy Committee, the 21st at 9:30?
9:30.
February 21st?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay.
Okay. May I have a motion?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Amen.